I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Welcome to everyone. Tuesday, November 9th, 2 o'clock, 9 o'clock. First order is adoption of our minutes from October 26th. Moved by Deputy Warden Mennel, second by Counselor Ketchabah. I will call the vote, all in favor. And that carries, thank you. Reminder of disclosure pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof.
I have to declare on post-session item three, I have a close relationship with the person being discussed.
So noted. No one else, all right. Item four, presenting petitions, presentations, and delegations. This morning we have Candace Miller, Fanshawe Corporate Training Services, enhancing programs and services for older adults in Elgin County. Good morning Candace, whenever you're ready you have the floor. Welcome.
Good morning, thank you for the invitation this morning. I am just going to share a PowerPoint presentation, which is a summary of the detailed report and appendices that you were all sent, I believe. So I'm just going to take a moment to share my screen. Just confirming, you can all see the Corporate Training Solutions report summary and feedback in presentation mode?
We can.
Wonderful, thank you. So once again, thank you for this opportunity to share a brief summary of the work that took place over the summer. It was about a five-month time period that we engaged with Elgin County. Specifically Julie and Brian were part of our technical committee. And I'm here today simply to present the recommendations and the findings of the report and seek any feedback or information questions that you may have. So this particular enhancing programs and services for seniors, just to note, we did have a parallel study with the city of St. Thomas underway, which we had determined that the target population would be older adults 55 and plus. So that's what we were working with with respect to the actual audience for this particular study. And with this then, we had seven key deliverables that were required throughout the extensive study. First, we took a look at defining the existing community resources with a specific rural focus, doing a comparative study to other similar municipalities and rural settings similar to those that were in Elgin County. We also did an inventory, which I'll speak to this morning, listing all the extensive programming that exists already within the county. And then looking at a gap analysis, opportunities for potential partnerships or resources or support that was needed. We also conducted two significant surveys. We had a survey of external stakeholders, which for Elgin County, we had a total of nine participatory groups. We also, in the city of St. Thomas, had a total of 14 different groups being surveyed. So some of them did have some overlap in those particular areas. So it was a decent sample size of external stakeholders to be able to participate in the community-based survey. And then the older adult survey, we had over 400 people respond to that particular survey. And of that group, 100 were specifically from Elgin County. So again, a very good sample size to be able to work with. And we basically asked them what they were looking for as it related to programs and services for older adults 55 and plus. Then based on the existing community resources, the analysis that we did, and then also the survey results, both from the community stakeholders and the older adults themselves, we did a bit of a program review and developed a roster of proposed programs based on what we had found. And then also took a look at some future considerations through the environmental scan, looked at governance models, best practices overall. And we also conducted a facility determination. So we took a look at where existing programs currently are being offered, and then maybe proposed some areas where additional programming might be available. And to round it out, we completed an outreach review, taking a look at some of the methodologies for marketing communication outreach about the programs and services for older adults, and recommended some best practices and some practical implementation. And today, we're here presenting the final report to council. So with respect to our first deliverable, we did have a sort of focus group that we started with, with Julie sort of leading in the CAOs for each of the municipalities. We asked them what they were looking for, what their needs are, what their interests were specifically as it related to seniors programming and services. Again, older adults 55 and plus. And the key themes that emerged from that focus group was that they wanted to acknowledge the unique needs of each municipality, specifically within the county, make sure that those voices were heard, that there was an increase in community partnerships, as well as addressing any barriers to participation. And one of the major barriers was distance to venues and potential isolation of older adults. So our team conducted an environmental scan of other similar municipalities with a rural focus. And what we learned was that programs are often offered and organized by local health organizations within their particular communities. So it could be from long-term care homes or public health. And that there are lots of similar programs similar to what's being offered in Elgin County around fitness, crafts, and ancestry research. And then five of the six counties reviewed had a dedicated senior center as well, located somewhere within the county, which was interesting. And then also, what emerged from the environmental scan and research was that virtual programming was becoming increasingly popular, of course, due to COVID, but even beyond that. And there was lots of programs being offered around, you know, using the internet, as well as even telephone-based programming to kind of deal with those barriers and issues around distance and isolation. So the program summary indicated that the most prevalent programs types were fitness at 29%, basic needs programs at 14%, and leisure programs at 13%. And then the most, sorry, the least prevalent programs were volunteer, respite, and culture programs. More than half of the programs were identified as older adults 18+. So there wasn't necessarily a targeted older adult 55 and plus. It was more sort of open to anyone who was over the age of 18. And the term older adults was not often used for specific programs within Elgin County. It often targeted, as we said, in general, older adults 18+. But they did have a targeted section, about 15% around seniors specifically. So different terminology and potentially different target audience may be attracted depending on how it was presented in terms of age and age ranges. So the second deliverable, we looked at doing a bit of a community profile and looking at some key findings and some foundational information to help set the stage to better understanding what needs were in the county. So some of the important highlights, I would say here, are that Elgin County definitely has an aging population with a high number of older adults in that 55-plus range. And actually, 25% of older adults are still living alone. A policy review also conducted indicated that older adults prefer to live independently, but they do maybe require additional supports because they're encouraged to sort of age in place. And activity levels are lower in Elgin County comparative to the rest of the province overall. And we also saw that specifically in the city of St. Thomas. And then 55- to 75-year-old population, as we grow in terms of the number of years, that will actually stabilize. So we'll have stable numbers of population growth between 55 to 74. However, what we will see grow more significantly over the next 25 years is a population 75+ will continue to grow. So that's an important point for consideration. And traditional hobbies are things like home and garden, nature-type activities, excursions locally are also very popular. So what we found, based on the surveys that we conducted, are that many programs exist within the county specifically. However, a lot of them are already full or waitlisted, which makes a challenge for new people or additional individuals who are older adults 55 and plus to be engaged. And community agencies are very interested in offering more programs. However, there is a restriction due to space limitations. And in many cases, funding is also a challenge. Older adults are interested in programming and services that cater to their needs. But one of the major findings of the older adult survey is that a lot of individuals are not aware of what is actually available to them. And if they are aware, most in cases, as we noted in point number one, they are waitlisted or full. Top programming seemed to be fitness, sport, and leisure for individuals. And that could be correlated to the fact that individuals in the county may have, you know, higher health issues and things like that, which was noted in the environmental scan. So maybe they're looking at improving their health. And traditional daytime programming is preferred. However, there was some indication within Elgin County that Sundays were also a time where individuals were interested in engaging in activities. And the major, the majority of older adults preferred high-intensity activities. And stakeholders state that their clients prefer low-intensive activities. So there was a bit of an inconsistency here because, between the community stakeholder survey and the older adult survey. Accessibility factors are also very important for seniors to make sure that they feel included and that they feel comfortable attending sessions. And it was also noted in the survey that an activity guide, listing programmings and services that's accessible both online and in print, was actually preferred by the majority of those that were being surveyed. So a quick summary of the program key findings. Some of the gaps that we identified here were that not enough fitness programs and sport programs were being tailored to specific needs. So the proposed idea here would be to potentially partner, look for grant opportunities, determine if there's space available, which we did a facility determination audit, so to speak. And that can potentially help to make connections or synergies. And the idea of exploring even virtual programming and promoting that could be beneficial. Another gap was that they lacked unstructured programs to increase social time and connectedness between older adults 55 and plus. So the opportunity to even create free offerings across the county and in St. Thomas was encouraged potentially to connect with individuals and to help support mental health and social isolation issues. And encourage some peer-led activities and projects is another proposed idea that could be implemented. Also, there was a gap for outreach specifically to those that are socially isolated. So working with community partners was an idea here to support outreach in areas of high need specifically, and contributing to what we call a program or a leisure guide, listing everything that is available in collaboration with the city of St. Thomas would be something that could be considered and recommended. And the need for respite programs was also noted as a gap as well for caregivers and adults with complex needs. So again, working with partners, partner organizations to identify needs and resources to expand in this particular area. Maybe looking at weekend programming. Even though daytime is popular, there's still some interest in Sunday programs where the space is specifically available. And this is just an example of a possible sample roster. I won't go through this in detail as you can kind of review it in general. However, we did complete and provide this information in the report. But this was based on the older adult survey, as well as the gap analysis, as well as the facility determination. We tried to really look at what could be something, as well as the environmental scan, like what's going on in other similar types of communities that could be offered specifically in the county. And what I just wanted to point out here is that there's some opportunity to sort of take this to a virtual programming or an online phone-based opportunity to help reduce the issue around distancing as well being a challenge because the county is so large with municipalities spread over a large geographical area. But there were things like senior center without walls, which offered bingo and trivia and talks. And that could be coordinated with partners and sort of on an ongoing basis as well. So this is just basically sample ideas based on what the research indicated. And the key findings around the future consideration is that a hub-based or kind of a one-stop-shop model has been recommended for the St. Thomas Senior Center that really shifts its focus to a community partnership or system navigation center to provide more inclusive memberships and participation options, even for those that are in the county as well. 58% of older adult centers in Ontario are already serving rural dwelling seniors. And this population is identified as a key target area. So finding those synergies and ways to connect and partner together would be a great way forward. As I mentioned earlier, that in the last slide, virtual programming is becoming more and more popular, something that could be considered for future. And then also, most centered offered some kind of accessible spaces, which can be difficult to find in rural communities. So, you know, addressing that in a variety of different ways, including maybe that virtual programming can be a way forward. And we also found lots of potential synergies as we worked on the city of St. Thomas parallel study as well. There's lots of great ways in which we can connect and support those in rural communities as outlined here. So the facility determination overview or review had certain key findings. So the highest number of programs that were available as we reviewed the program inventory and that we mapped those to specific locations. They're being run out of Elgin County, Elmer, or, sorry, West Elgin, Elmer, and Central Elgin respectively, with the numbers that are identified there. The fewest programs then were found in Malahide, in Bayham, and also in Southwood. In the west end of the county, programs concentrated in Rodney and West Lauren for the most part. And then the east end of the county programs were concentrated in Elmer. And then aside from public libraries, communities in Bayham lacked program venues specifically. And so where we thought there could again be some opportunities is virtual and telephone programming be explored. And opportunities to support community organizations in need of free space should also be explored, including venues that did not appear on the program inventory specifically. So the next slide really gives you a heat map or a location of where most of the facilities are located. The map, the heat map on the left gives you sort of the highest concentration. As you can see there, the red is the highest concentration area and where it sort of spans geographically. So that's your central Elgin and Elmer. And then if you see there to the west, the larger yellow area is West Elgin. And then the map on the right actually plots the number of different opportunities within the given municipality. So this is important to kind of see holistically, to look at opportunities where new facilities might be able to be tapped into, or where the best concentration is, or synergies might be able to be connected between the municipalities within all of Elgin County. And finally, our outreach key findings indicated that there was some fragmentation between municipalities and St. Thomas. It makes it difficult for older adults to understand all of the programming landscape. And the survey results showed that new outreach and communication methods should be a key area of focus to promote any new or existing programs. As one of the key findings was that people want to attend programs, but they just aren't fully aware. So establishing a strong outreach and communication strategy is a good way forward. And how we recommend doing that is developing an integrated marketing communication plan that uses a blend of both traditional and digital strategies so that we're ensuring that we're inclusive in the approach to basically increase awareness of older adults in programming, and then also attracting those that are socially isolated. And how you do that specifically is focusing on a central message or a theme across all of those same channels. So the message is consistent, whether you're getting it digitally, traditionally, whether you're getting it in Elmer, or Malahide, St. Thomas, or wherever within the county. And finally, one thing that we noted that was very popular and seemed to work well in other similar rural areas is a coordinated loyalty or rewards program. That could also be considered to encourage individuals to have repeat registration in different spaces or places. As well as even just traditional word-of-mouth marketing was also very popular. So how you can potentially reward that or provide some type of loyalty program, you know, friends connect friends to different types of programs is a really great, great method to increase engagement, membership, and participation. So all of those key findings in each of the deliverables basically led our team to a list of top 10 recommendations as it relates to enhancing programs and services for older adults 55+ within Elgin County and the other municipalities. The first is creating diverse programming options to meet a variety of different needs. One of the key findings indicated that there's going to be a significant increase in population of those 75 and plus due to population projections over the next 25 years. And right now, a lot of the programming is indicated just for adults 18+. So really targeting and creating some diverse programming for those that are above 75 would be a good way forward to engage that group, to ensure that they're, you know, not socially isolated, but participating in a variety of different offerings. Maintaining what's existing around the sport, social, and fitness-type programs. But also then increasing respite, social, and arts and cultural programs as well, as that was noted in the survey as an area of interest, but having very low opportunity for people to engage in those types of activities. Continuing again with the regular daytime programming. But here, again, I think a common theme was exploring virtual programming, whether that be online, as long as internet connectivity is available. But telephone seems to be a great way to connect seniors and those who are older adults, and looking at potential partnerships with others that might be already doing it. Or you could also look at building new partnerships with individuals who might want to do that in the future. And leveraging the existing program inventory, there were a number of different programs that were offered. And we provided a program inventory tool that can be continuously developed and maintained moving forward. But using that tool to really look at how new private and public partnerships could be developed moving forward to support the older adult 55-plus community would be a great way forward. And then figuring out within the county, because of the distance, how could that look, or what would that look like from a referral or a navigation process? That would also be something that our team saw in the results and would recommend. And then strengthening cross-county system navigation by convening potentially an older adults program and services network that's made up of stakeholders and older adults themselves within the community. Maybe connecting to what's going on in the city of St. Thomas as well is a great way forward to support the connection of programs, but also the connections of older adults in the community. Recommendation number six is to identify some resources that could be shared with community partners to enable new programs to occur. So there's lots of great, through the facility determination, lots of great indoor and outdoor spaces that could be tapped into within Elgin County and the various municipalities that are also available for free. And that's something that individuals had said this, that they also want low-cost or free programming to engage individuals perhaps who don't have the funds to participate in things, but still want to be active. Seven is to establish a partnership with the city of St. Thomas Senior Center to cross-promote programming as the lines basically within the county is also Central Elgin and St. Thomas as an urban center is located there. So how can you develop new programs that align with older adults' recreation interests, also having that rural focus, but also mutually benefiting all parties who are involved? Number eight is to create a seasonal activity guide in collaboration with the city of St. Thomas that also involves and includes a lot of great opportunities that are welcome and open in Elgin County. So combining this all with a focus for older adults 55 and plus, being very intentional and specific for that target group. And then also offering it in an accessible format. So older adults 55 and plus need larger font. They want to access it online perhaps, or maybe in print format. So looking at collaborating in that specific area. And then, as I mentioned, under the outreach and marketing strategies, developing an integrated marketing communications plan that looks at both the digital and traditional, increasing awareness overall with that centralized theme to help increase participation and engagement. And then considering the rural loyalty or rewards program that encourages St. Thomas and Elgin County older individuals and residents to try new activities within and across the county specifically, was our final recommendation via this study and report. So that concludes my overall summary. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you this morning. I'd welcome any questions, comments, thoughts at this time.
Thank you Candace, and I'll open the floor for comments. Counselor Martin?
Yes Candace, I attended your workshop that you did before the city of St. Thomas. I was unable to, I tried to ask a question, make some comments, but my internet kept cutting out, so I did send it afterwards. But I agree that transportation in the county is going to be a vital one. And I know one thing that the seniors home in St. Thomas does, Valley View, they actually have a bus that goes out and picks people up in their homes and brings them to events there, which I think is a great idea. And I would like to see maybe that we do some more of that. But I also know that we have different community groups that have community halls. And I know of two for certain, three actually, in Central Elgin. And that they offer programming for seniors. And they used to receive some grant money from municipalities originally to help keep the buildings, so that their buildings, you know, that they can continue to offer these free or very low-cost programs. And I know of at least four seniors programs that are being offered right now. But they struggle sometimes with the cost. So I don't know if there'd be a thoughts on trying to encourage, because many of those in small communities like that, people can walk through them, and that's a real advantage. You know, so that there isn't a problem transportation-wise, and it's local, and it's, there are a variety of, as you say, exercise seems to be the main one, but we also have a cultural one that occurs as well. So I just don't know if there's some where or some recommendation about possibly grants to help with small community groups that are offering, that have buildings, that a lot of us had buildings in our communities long before amalgamation, et cetera. So that was just an idea. And I'm sure that many of the municipalities here have community buildings that belong to their community rather than municipally owned, and do struggle with the costs and continue to try to offer programs for seniors.
Yes, thank you for the question. It was a common theme throughout the city of St. Thomas and the Elgin County study. So one of the recommendations is that in order to increase opportunity for funding, and we did note some funds that were available, some that are available more so regularly and some that are irregular. Recently, the federal government had issued a New Horizons for Seniors program that was a one-time opportunity to engage in a grant-type of situation. But that's where we felt that the opportunity for partnerships was going to be significantly important. So if the funding is not available, so funding can be also in partnership with organizations and facilities and things like that. But if it isn't available, you know, using resources wisely and connecting with each other and figuring out ways to collaborate. And what I liked about this is that it was very collaborative between the city of St. Thomas and Elgin County specifically. So taking a look at some of those resources that are already out there and reviewing how it can be, you know, potentially modified or offered in different areas and spaces could be a great way forward to support some of those concerns and comments you have.
Julie?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Great presentation Candace, thanks for being here. I just want to follow up on Counselor Martin's comment about the Adult Day program, I presume, at Valley View. We do have a partnership with Valley View to provide that service. And so county residents do get transport opportunities to go and participate in that program as well. And we provide Adult Day programming in our homes at Terrace Lodge and Bobear Villa. And Valley View again does the transport there. And Bobear Villa client transportation is through the West Elgin Community Health Center.
Comment Counselor? Comment, Counselor Purcell?
Yes, just, just building on the partnership part of it. When you were doing your maps, were you able to drill down or do you have the information on all the potential partners that are out there that are currently filling the gap? Basically, your maps show the formal healthcare delivery system that's out there, but I can give you two examples that just build on what just been talked about. There's a seniors group in Dunwich, they have a permanent building on the main street. They're constantly in use when COVID's not here, but they're getting back to it already with quilting and cards and daily and little exercises and just dropping in for coffee. They put on big events like a Christmas dinner for all the seniors with about three, 400 in attendance for a small municipality. Plus there's things like the nonprofit Lions Apartments, which already work with what you showed on the map in some forms of partnership. But were you able to drill down and get an inventory of potential partners? Because I, I think that's the key. We don't have to reinvent the wheel, we just have to put the pieces back together.
Absolutely. Thank you for the question, Counselor. So we, we actually have a program inventory tool. So we drilled down very deep to over 190 some odd programs, I believe, within all the different municipalities within Elgin County. So that tool is actually provided and I did provide it to Julie and Brian. So that tool can be used and maintained to be able to create those synergies, those partnerships to review where the opportunities may exist. And then the heat map was also kind of to align with what already exists and then what facilities are not being used that currently could be used because some of the research indicated that there's just not enough space or they're waitlisted and community partners are looking to expand their programming, but their spaces are already full. So the data is there and I think that's one of the great outcomes of this particular study is that there is a ton of data that we were able to be able to provide. So taking the next steps to determine ways forward is really at the fingertips with all the different resources and data sets that we were able to provide. So hopefully that information can be used in a great way forward to, to continue to establish partnerships, relationships and, and figuring out opportunities to move forward in existence with all some of the great things that are already happening.
Further comments? All right, Candace, I want to thank you for a very thorough report. Appreciate it. If there's no more comments, I'll entertain a motion to receive. Moved by Jones, Purcell. I will call the vote, all in favor. That carries. Again, thank you, Candace.
Thank you so much.
Motion to move into committee of the whole, please. By Martin, second by McPhail. All in favor. That carries. We are into committee of the whole. Boards of council, outside boards and staff. The first one up is from myself. Try to answer any questions or comments. It was a busy month, but it was actually a very enjoyable month. Julie and I were up to a lot of places and it was so nice to see people again. We met a lot of counselors that, to be honest, I probably would have walked by. Had a nice chat, met a lot of staff and it, I was real happy with it, so. Go ahead, Julie.
Just as an addition to your report, Mr. Warden, we are preparing to welcome the public back into the council chambers, though at this time we're just establishing capacity limits for the room, but you'll see that some chairs are set up with some, you know, parameters posted. So we'll be posting notice of that in the coming days.
Other step back towards normal. We'll welcome that. Any comments on the report? If not, entertain a motion to receive. Moved by Ketchba, French. I'll call the vote, all in favor. That carries. Thank you. Next up, tree commissioners, lead inspector, quarterly, quarterly report, July, September. Morning, Jeff, welcome. Floor is yours.
Good morning, Mr. Warden, and, and good morning to the rest of Elgin County Council as well. Before you, my quarterly report for the months of July to September includes numbers of, for logging activity throughout the county. As you can see, numbers are down a little bit when compared to last year, almost half. And there was a roughly 132,000 board feet harvested over approximately 185 acres. There was one application for clearing approved over that same period of time in central Elgin for an area of approximately 0.19 hectares approved and conditional upon conformity with the county's known net loss policy. Or weed complaints were received in that, that period as well. One of the weed complaints was actually for Canada Fleabane, which is not one of the, the regulated weeds by the Weed Control Act, had a number of those weed complaints this, this summer, actually. The remaining weed complaints were addressed by the landowner and, and not typical. And I kind of wonder if it might have a little bit to do with the weather we had this year. There was a couple entire fields that were taken over by noxious weeds that the landowners addressed and no weed destruction orders were issued in that third quarter. As far as industry news, this is kind of a follow-up to my quarterly report earlier in the year about the Lomantria Dispar Dispar moth, the moth formerly known as the European Gypsy Moth. At some point in between that report and this one, the moth kind of formally changed its name. So as you will recall, earlier in the summer, late spring, there was a lot of calls of complaint received by municipal and conservation authority offices about, about defoliated trees and the general dirtiness of these invasive insects. And in my report earlier in the year, I did provide some, some information with regard to this moth. And just wanted to point out, this might be a good time for a lot of landowners to maybe kind of assist with helping with the issue for next year. It is kind of the ideal time once leaves start falling off of trees to find egg masses that are left behind by the moth. And, and each moth or each egg mass contains roughly 100 to 1,000 eggs. So each one destroyed will decrease numbers fairly significantly. So it, there are a couple of YouTube videos that I've, links that I've provided to YouTube videos there that will help landowners get an idea of the best way to destroy these, these egg masses. So the two pictures that I provided there, ones that I came across over the, over the summer and, and that white birch on the right was just such a small area in that area of the picture, there's about 20 egg masses, give or take. That tree alone probably had several hundred egg masses on it. So be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions for Jeff this morning? Counselor McPhail?
Yes, Mr. Warden, through you too, Jeff. This is in regard to harvest, forest harvesting in, in Elgin County. And so I'm, I'm coming to you with, for some clarification that, do I have the right word? The, like the, the basal policy of leaving specific sized trees in a, in a cut to repopulate that forest? And?
Yes.
Yes. We, we, we work with that policy in, in Elgin?
Yes, yes.
My understanding is?
Requirement left required as post-harvest.
And in that policy, is there a, a language in there that a logger has to leave specific high value trees in his cut? Or are they able to comply with that policy by leaving BAM and other trees that do provide tree cover, but certainly they're not, they're not what you would call a high value tree that you want to ensure that will continue on seeding down the forest?
If that's, that is right, there is, there is no specific requirement as far as leaving certain species of trees. It focuses more on numbers and the sizes of trees that need to be left residual after following the harvest.
And, and your estimation as, as, as a forester, would it not be imperative to, to ensure that we leave the right kind of trees, the hard maples and, and that in our cuts so that you have the opportunity to have that regeneration by, by the more high value trees?
Certainly it's encouraged and I think following the, the invasion of, of our forests like the Emerald Ash Bore, I think it's more apparent and more obvious than ever that we need to leave good diversity, yes.
And do we have a process that either we need to change or is there other examples that we can use to ensure that we are leaving those right type of trees in our cuts?
One of the, there's two options in the bylaw for doing a selective harvest. One of them is the, the one that you referred to with the, more or less the, the size or diameter limit cutting with specific requirements for the sizes of trees that need to be left behind in the numbers. But there's also that option and it's gaining popularity all the time is to do a good, good forestry management practices, cut where it is, the woodlot is marked by registered professional forester and they mark trees according to good forestry. So they will identify those trees that need to be left behind to provide good seed sources for future forests and that type of thing. And, and that is a requirement for any harvest done in a woodlot that is identified as, as significant provincially and, and by the county as well.
Is that the current practice that we are working under or are we, are we allowing, you know, loggers to, to leave the trees that they, they want to leave?
Both options are, are permitted. We're definitely encouraging and preferring and kind of pushing the, the good forestry management.
I think the point from Counselor McPhail is that if they want to be difficult, they, they can pick and choose what they want rather than us dictating to them. And maybe we need to tighten that.
That's where I'm hoping that this is going to go in my, oh. Got a hand up.
I noticed that. Good morning, Mr. Gibson.
Morning. The bylaw already provides for restrictions against cutting to the density below the minimum requirements for woodlands and also requires, or the other restriction relates to residual basal density as well. I think that the, the scheme that's already established is that a harvest is required to be in accordance with good forestry practice, good forestry practice by, according to the bylaw requires a proper harvesting plan with tree markings, which must be submitted to the, to the tree commissioner. And the tree commissioner obviously is free to consult with a forester. So the, the scheme within the, within the bylaw already establishes a process and incorporates standards which if violated, our violation, which if, if they're not complied with, they're violations under the bylaw and we certainly in the past have brought charges against individuals, not only owners, but also individuals involved in the harvest for those violations, whether or not they be not marking trees, cutting unmarked trees, cutting to below the woodlands definition, excessive cutting, damage to the, to the woodlands as well. Those are all charges that are provided for and contemplated under the bylaw.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So what I'm hearing is everything is happy in Hoopla and we're doing everything we can to protect our, our regeneration of forests.
Well, what I spoke to Counselor McPhail is that the by, bylaw provides for it. You had asked about the policies. It's a, it's certainly a bylaw. It's a matter of, it's a matter of enforcement. Oh, any observation, so. Happy in Hoopla, it was one way of putting it. We're certainly, the bylaw has been reviewed, was reviewed earlier this year with changes that were required. There were no changes that were recommended in this particular area. And it becomes a matter of, of observation and enforcement.
Well, certainly, I, you know, I'm, I'm very satisfied that the bylaw is in place. Again, as long as, you know, the, the, it's being properly adhered to and that the next generation of woodlot is, is going to be populated with, with forestation that is something of, of a more valuable nature than a, than a BAM tree that, yes, it's, it's making, it's making forest cover, but certainly it, it doesn't, I don't think bring true of what you want in a balanced forest.
Go ahead.
I guess this is Stephen. Basically, I think our problem is when we do come to enforcement, Steve's in a difficult position. He can't go out and physically stop the loggers. Jeff can't either, to be very honest. There's not a process in place where we turn it over to a bylaw enforcement group or someone that has the teeth and the ability to do proper enforcement, especially if they file a plan with you and then don't follow that plan and do as described. They cut down all the high value trees and, and they technically have satisfied the basal rules and that because of ground coverage left. Is there something we can put in that would give Jeff the authority or, or a better vehicle to do enforcement going forward?
I guess my comment would be to Jeff, do you feel you have the necessary enforcement ability?
I believe, yes. The, the bylaw does include provision of a stop work order and it will allow me to go in and stop activity if I see something that's contributing to the bylaw. So I believe the tools are there.
I would suggest the biggest problem is if someone's back on a gravel road and no one reports it, the county's a big, big animal as we know. So, you know, if, if we find out, we can act, but if someone's doing it on the weekend and stuff like that.
Well, and we're not, but that's an issue that certainly has been discussed by council or before council previous. And certainly the commissioner wants, he sees or is notified of, of issues. We've certainly had a busy fall for new charges under this particular bylaw. And so the tools are there, yes. Enforcement, I suppose that enforcement would, would or could potentially improve if there were broad enforcement officers, but that's, I suppose that that is a matter to be reviewed in more detail with a specific proposal.
Counselor McPhail?
Well, certainly from my perspective, and I guess that's, you know, we, we sit around as council with lots of ideas, but we don't have the solutions and we look to our staff for solutions. And if there doesn't seem to be a problem, then I guess we don't need a solution. But if there is things that seem from a staff's perspective that possibly are falling through the cracks. the cracks, i.e. maybe that our enforcement officer is stretched a little thin, maybe needs some assistance at times to, to be able to monitor all these requests for cuts. We have to leave it up to our staff people to either recognize that and come with a proposal for a solution to it. And if it's a situation that it's fine, then that's, that's, that's fine too. So you're, you're the people on the front lines, and these are just, from my perspective, simple questions that I do here in the community, and I feel that they're important to bring to this table for consideration.
Council Martin?
Yes, just one comment, and, and Jeff, it's something that isn't in our tree bylaw, but an idea would be to help with this would be that there'd be forced enforcement that they have to leave certain seed trees, big mature, important trees of, of the right species, that some of those cannot be logged, so that when they get their permit from you or whatever, that they, those trees be marked specifically not to be removed because they would help with the regeneration of the good trees.
You're muted, Jeff.
Certainly, certainly that's something I can discuss with any har, like anybody submitting a harvest application and make sure that that is, is addressed and taken care of.
I'd assume that would be covered under just best management practices, including good forestry, but.
That's correct, yes.
Further questions, comments? Go ahead.
Just one comment as a follow-up. I do know many of the, the people who go in and mark trees, you know, for logging, they don't leave seed trees, they don't leave mature trees. They mark every tree that they think they can get value from. So that's why I just think there needs to be something said that you can't take every mature tree, that you have to leave some mature seed trees.
All right, I think point's been made. Nothing further? I will entertain, thank you, Jeff. I entertain a motion to receive by Ketchabah and Mennel. No further discussion, I'll call the vote, all in favor. That carries. Thank you, Jeff. The non-purchasing coordinator, procurement activity report, July 1st to September 30th. Good morning, Mike, welcome.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to County Council. So this quarterly procurement activity report details the awards of contracts that were approved by directors valued between 15,000 and $250,000. So this report covers the period from July to September of this year. The list of the projects, the supplier and the amount is attached as appendix A. All contracts comply with the county's procurement policy, and the recommendation is the report be received and filed, and at this time I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Well, thank you, Mike. Open the floor for questions. Looks like everyone's pretty happy, so. That's always a good thing, Mike. Motion to receive, please. Jones, Jiguer, no further discussion, all in favor. That carries. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Next up, Director of Financial Services, 2021 third quarter performance.
Thank you, Mr.
Jim?
The report before you was presented to the, October 26th, and requested that it be brought forward to the council for implementation. It is the third quarter performance report, and it shows a performance for the quarter favorable of 385,000. That brings the year-to-date favorable performance to 787,000. And the performance for the quarter, 200,000 from the homes related to the work they've been doing on, on the Case Mix Index Rating, that was good news across all three homes as well. 140,000 of favorable performance was from staffing as the result of positions temporarily being left vacant. Also important to note is that there's likely to be a pipeline write-off later this year on our assessment base, and that will likely reduce a significant portion of that 787,000 of year-to-date good, but will still leave us in a favorable position. I'd be happy to take any questions in my time.
Questions for Mr. Buncho? Comments? Not seeing any. Motion to receive the report. Martin, second by Mennel. No further discussion, I'll call the vote, all in favor, please. That carries, thank you. Thank you, Jim. Next up, we have Manager of Planning, approval for official plan amendment number 11, Municipal of Central Elgin. Welcome, Nancy.
Through you to members of council. This report is a recommendation for approval of official plan amendment number 11 from the municipality of Central Elgin. The property is located at 173 Williams Street in Port Stanley, and the intent is to re-designate the lands from commercial to residential. I'm available for any questions.
Questions for Nancy? I think it's fairly straightforward. No questions? Everyone's happy, receive a motion. Receive. Moved by Martin, second by Jones. I will call the vote, all in favor. Again, that carries, thank you. Thank you, Nancy. Next up, we have General Manager of EPE, Deputy CIO, Contract Award, Administration Building, Accessibility Elevator Edition and Basement Public Accessibility. Good morning, Brian, go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Warden, through you to council. Before you, our recent second round tender results associated with a reduced project scope for Administration Building, Accessible Elevator Edition, Basement Public Accessibility, Washroom and Elevator Decommissioning Project. The design team attributes the tender results, which do exceed the pre-tender construction cost estimate and, and project budget to the ongoing construction material supply and cost volatility, as well as the project's expected 24-month duration. Despite higher than expected tender results, staff recommends that the report be received for information, that Elgin Contracting and Restoration Limited be selected for the Administration Building Accessibility Elevator Edition and Basement Public Accessibility Washroom and Elevator Decommissioning Project at a total price of $4,617,000 exclusive of HST, and that the warden and chief administrative officer be authorized to sign their respective contract. Happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Brian. Open the floor for questions, comments. Council Jiguer?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a comment and request around communication on, on this project, and maybe because it's an internal and facilities, we think less of doing that kind of proactive communication we've done for bridges, for example. But I know that, that the price tag has generated some interest, and many are surprised that this project could cost that much. And so there's interest, and so I think we've had good success with previous proactive progress updates that's been appreciated by the community, so I would highly recommend we use the same approach for this project.
Noted. Certainly, we're all very happy when we get a good quote, but we still have to continue doing business and, you know, two years from now, this price, you know, you look at the cost of housing, who would have predicted it? This may look good in two years, but we don't know. We can look back, but. Reports here. Look for Council McPhail.
Just, just one comment, and certainly getting on the heels of Council Jiguer's comments, I know with the reconstruction, it's right, the engineering staff done a remarkable job of keeping the public and businesses and everybody up to date on the project and its, how it was proceeding forward, and certainly I've had a lot of comments about Aaron and the skill that he, he applied to making sure everybody knew what was going on, and certainly it's, there's a, there's a comfort level to the community when they're provided with information.
The old adage, communication, and he's done an excellent job. It's, that's appreciated because it gives us a heads up. Nothing worse than a project in your neighborhood and you're the last one to find out, so it's, it's appreciated, so. Point taken. If there's no further discussion, what's your will and pleasure? We're gonna.
I'll move the report.
I'll say. Phil, Mennel?
Probably the price we want, but I don't think it's alternative.
Just, just have one comment. Our existing elevators are going out, coming out?
Eventually, yeah. Maybe decommissioned, yeah.
They're an artifact in their own. I, I hope that they're just not going to go to the scrap pile, but maybe that there's a repurpose for them somewhere along the line because they're, they're probably some of the oldest operating elevators in the province, I would think.
Council, Council Jones?
Yeah, suggesting they go to the museum, like. You never know.
Just before you close them off, look in, look down, look up, make sure there's no one in there.
Mr. Warden, at the very least, we'll save the TSSA plates because I think they're number 82 and 83 actually in the province. So we'll, we'll do some investigation.
They're, they're, they're like an old friend, and they need to be set up. Even, you know, even a, even a recording of the clunking as you go up.
Virtual experience.
Most of us can't remember that clunking because we're not brave enough to win them, but. No further discussion, I will call the vote, all in favor? And that carries. Thank you, Brian. Seven Legislative Services Coordinator. Completed Services for Older, Older Adult Study. Looking at me? Welcome, Carolyn.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Earlier this morning, Candace Miller presented the results of the Services for Older Adult Study, and this study will be shared with the local municipal councils, as well as the Community Safety and Well-Being Integration Table, and together with the local CAOs and the integration table, we'll be looking at the recommendations, prioritizing them, and coming up with a plan for implementing. And the recommendation is that the report be received, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Carolyn. Questions for Carolyn, comments? Everyone looks happy, so thank you for that. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the recommendation. Purcell, Jiguer, no further discussion, all in favor, please. Carries, thank you. Thank you, Carolyn. CIO, Increase in Billing Rate, County Prosecutor. Go ahead, Julie.
Thanks, Mr. Warden, through you to members of council. This report recommends that Elgin County Council authorize an increase in the billing rate for the county prosecutor to $155 per hour effective January 1st, 2022. Additionally, that the CIO be directed to send notification of this increase to Elgin's local municipal partners, the City of St. Thomas, and any other entity who, who uses prosecution services. I'd be pleased to answer any report, any questions you might have.
Thank you, Julie. Comments? Questions? One looks happy again. Warden, second, please. Jones, McPhail? Call the vote, all in favor? Carries, thank you. Again, Julie. COVID-19 Emergency Team Planning, October update.
Thanks, Mr. Warden, through you to members of council. Just an FYI report for council's consideration. The recommendation is that it be received, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have.
Be straightforward, everyone looks satisfied. I'll move her in second, please. French? Ketchabah? Call the question, all in favor? Again, that carries. Thank you, Julie. Council Correspondents, items for consideration. We have three there. Does not need any of them?
Yeah, I, I don't think we need to motion, but I think we need some direction from council that they're willing to let our engineering department look at a crosswalk on the main street in Dutton. The request has come in. This is a county road, and it is right in the downtown area. It's an EDR, major car dealership right across the road from Service Ontario, so a lot of people constantly going back and forth. Plus, on the same corner, we have the only gas station in town in close proximity to the 401, and we get a lot of American traffic not wanting to pay the extra price on the 401 and dropping in, or saying no, it's there. So we would appreciate the study, and then we'll move on from there, as long as council's willing to. Go ahead.
Council Martin?
Yes, we did the same thing in Belmont, and we have installed it. We've had the odd complaint from a farmer that the road's narrowed now that parked cars would have made it just as narrow. Anyway, no, I think it's a great idea. Bob and I, I know it's very much appreciated in Belmont.
I certainly agree with that statement, and that narrowing down does slow the traffic down, and that was a bigger complaint. So. What's your will and pleasure, shall we?
Please support.
Okay, Jones and McPhail, it seems reasonable to me to take a look at it, so I'm seeing heads nodding. Should we have a resolution to that?
Sure, be it resolved that staff be directed to perform a study to determine the feasibility of a pedestrian crosswalk on Curry Road near Mary Street in Dutton.
All right, everyone clear on that? I will call the vote. That, that carries, thank you. Receive and file the other two? Or just, we do some?
Receive and file, or?
Yeah, I, I just speaking with Brian, and it's, it's something that's going to work itself through, so. Because I don't think there's any action required by council here. I think Brian and our road superintendent are sorting this out.
Yeah. Okay. So that, we'll move on to items for.
Can we receive and file?
Okay, move in second, please.
Items one through three.
Jiguer? Ketchabah? I'll call the vote, all in favor? Carries, thank you. Bond items for information, consent agenda. Go ahead.
I was just going to say I was excited about the announcement from Mr. Eric about the paramedicine grant, and I, I look forward to that because I know I've had a request, which I referred to Julie in our community, for someone who has someone in palliative state and, and wants to keep them at home, et cetera, but calling an ambulance every time they have a distressful thing is, is not beneficial. So this would be a wonderful program for someone like.
That is welcome news. Go ahead, Julie.
I'd be pleased to just provide a, a quick overview.
Certainly.
If I could have the opportunity, thanks, Mr. Warden. So we are thrilled to be among the 22 communities recently confirmed by Minister, or by MPP Eric as recipients for the Community Paramedicine for Long-Term Care Program. We anticipate that this program will provide up to $5 million in funding from now until 2024, the end of 2024. So right now, and in advance of implementation of this program, we are completing and compiling a business case and a budget summary, which we have to submit to the province before September, sorry, before December the 6th. What we do know about this program is that it's going to allow for an innovative opportunity for Elgin County to work with health services, to enhance services for patients who are currently on the long-term care home waitlist. And last time I looked at the waitlist times, it was about a two-year wait time. So you can imagine that's a lot of people living in their homes and aging in place. So we're looking forward to being, being able to deliver a program that will support those individuals who are aging in place and other clinically complex patients within Elgin and St. Thomas. So right now, we're working with our local health system providers to understand our community's needs and expectations for this program locally, and we look forward to receiving official notification of the funding allocation for our community, and will provide the public and county council with more information about this very exciting program once it's available. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very welcome news. Council McPhail?
Just, just a comment that, you know, Julie and I, with our trip to the East Coast, this has been in place for some time there and seems to be working, working very well, and so.
And so it's comforting that Metavee does have experience with this in real-time experience. And so look forward to this moving forward.
One of those things that makes a lot of sense. So it's nice to see it happen. Do we need to receive them, or?
I could just make one other note. For the purposes of those who are attending from the public virtually, there is notice of a Housing and Homelessness Forum, and I will note that that is not a public event at this time, and this preliminary event is restricted to counselors from across the county of Elgin for the purposes of sharing a recent report and study completed within our community. So we look forward to hosting additional events in support of housing and homelessness for our community in the future. But worth noting that this one has restricted attendance at this time.
Thank you for that. Do we need to receive and file those two? So a motion? Jones? French? For the vote? All in favor? Carries. Thank you. Do other business. Statements, inquiries by members? Go ahead, Counsel.
Yes, Mr. Warden, thank you very much. I realize, and I believe, that this council's already authorized the go-ahead for a lobby on the gas tax property, but I'm wondering if council would endorse inclusion of the lobby for the gas tax properties on, perhaps a request for a ministerial delegation at either the Good Roads and/or the Roma Conference.
I'm certainly willing to back that. I think that's going to be an easy sell for you.
Senator.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. It affects us all. So notice a motion? Not seeing any? Matters of urgency?
I'll follow council if there aren't any from council. But we have received a request from the municipality of Central Elgin that Elgin County Council provide a letter of support for their application to the Disaster Mitigation and Adaptation Fund. The application is due November the 15th, and the application consists of shoreline and harbor protection works in addition to storm sewer capacity and control enhancements. It's important to note that Central Elgin is not seeking financial or any other in-kind support for implementation from the county. They have provided a great amount of additional information regarding their application. So should council require it, I'd be pleased to read it out loud. Alternatively, council could direct that the warden provide a letter of support for Central Elgin's application to the Disaster Mitigation and Adaptation Fund.
Bob?
I'd be happy to move that.
Thank you, French. So that's welcome news to me and Sally. Appreciate that. Well, I'd better call the vote first. All in favor?
Too bad.
Carries. Thank you.
Cross our fingers.
I guess we're at a closed meeting. I need a motion to move into close. Moved by Ketchibah, second by Jagir. I will call them all in favor. Thank you. Again, and I suggest we take a break. Close. I'll entertain a motion to rise from by Purcell, second by French. Call the vote. All in favor? An open session? Welcome back, everyone.
Ollie's still in Arub Barber.
Yes, we.
She's somewhere in the building. Mentioned going to see Ollie. But I think we'll just proceed.
Okay. First. Motion to rise and report. Chief Administrative Officer, purchasing. Where are we at?
Yes, so for closed session, item number one, be it resolved that the report be received by staff personnel.
Moved by Jones, second by Mennel. Call the vote. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next is Shared Services?
Closed session, item number two, be it resolved that staff proceed as directed.
Moved by Jagir, second by Ketchibah. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Organizational update.
Be it resolved that the verbal update from the chief administrative officer be received and let staff proceed as directed.
Moved by second by Jones. Further discussion? All in favor? That is carried. Motion to adopt recommendations from the committee, the whole. Moved by Purcell, second by Ketchibah. All in favor? Carries. And consideration of bylaws.
We get a first, second, and third read of bylaw 21-40, bylaw to confirm proceedings of municipal council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin at the November 9th, 2021 meeting.
Moved by Jones. Second by French. In favor? Carries. At the bottom of the page. As always, I want to thank everyone for your attention and a good meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. By Jagir, second by Purcell. Vote. All in favor? That carries. We are adjourned, so.